Good evening, everyone. City Council meeting for October 11th. Welcome to everyone here and at home. The first thing we have this evening is a ceremonial matter. And during the League of Oregon Cities, I was given a award recognition to pass on and wanted to invite the recipient here. So today I get to announce the Fitness Leadership Award recipient, who is Willa Reich. Willa, would you come up to the podium, please?[35.61][35.61](APPLAUSE). I'm going to come down there, right there. I'm going to come down there in a minute, but before I do that, I want to read some things that were given to me about Willa. And she'll just have to stand there and be embarrassed by it, as we all recognize her. This says that "Since the early 1980s, Willa has shared her wisdom and expertise through a variety of government and not-for-profit community organizations. At the age of 72, Willa has not slowed down in her commitment to seeing others empowered and connected. Currently, Willa serves on committees such as the Advisory Board at the Campbell Center, co-chares the Peace Health Patient Advisory Council, the Campbell Center Holiday Pizzar Planning Committee, and the Diabetes Walkathon Planning Committee. Willa not only exhibits wisdom, but she exhibits beauty as well. It is Willa's beauty of character that endears her most, the Campbell Center community. One of the reasons Willa chooses to work in the senior community is because, quote, "As people grow older, they need a warm, welcoming place where they can learn and be treated as equals." So, yes. "And Willa teaches and facilitates classes such as porcelain doll making and Love to Read Book Club to engage the minds of older adults and create a social environment where they feel welcome. And as a diabetic, Willa is exemplary at showing and sharing her strength and knowledge in health and diabetic education." So, and I guess she was recently featured in Eugene Weekly in the Happening People section, so, okay, Willa.[132.22][132.22](LAUGHTER). So I'm going to read this, and I'm going to come down and present it to you. This is from the Governor of the State of Oregon. "That I, Theodore R. Kulungaski, Governor of the State of Oregon, do hereby offer my sincere appreciation to Willa Reich. On behalf of the citizens of the State of Oregon, I thank you and commend you for your time, your dedication, and enthusiasm in promoting physical activity and wellness in Oregon. Your contributions to our state are appreciated. Best wishes for good health and success. And testimony whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the State of Oregon, done at the Capitol in Salem this 23rd day of September 2010." Congratulations, Willa.[178.12][178.12](APPLAUSE). Let's give her another hand. Thank you so much.[223.81][223.81](APPLAUSE). Okay, we'll move on to the next part of our council meeting, and that's the Public Forum. I have 14 people signed up for the Public Forum tonight. The Public Forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issue, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if you know it. The timer and light indicates the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light means it's the end of your three minutes. So, first one up is Emmy Fox, followed by Carol Berg Caldwell.
I'm Emily Fox, or Emmy Fox, depending on when you knew me from. And I live at 455 East 31st Avenue, Eugene 97405. And, should I just begin? Oh, maybe Ward 6, I'm not sure. I am here today to discuss the negative impact of the Planning Commission to tentatively approve the Amazon cottages. The larger issue here is infill at what cost? There is really no Eugene code if a neighborhood feels that an infill project is not right for its area. The people of our neighborhood did not want this project for several reasons. Cramming 13 to 14 houses in less than an acre will greatly increase the traffic on 29th, 30th, and 31st, and Ferry Street. But what we really could not address with the code number was the fact that most of these so-called cottages will end up as rentals for college kids because they are of cheap construction, ugly, and a small size, 800 to 1700 square feet. That's because they're two duplexes. You may think that infill will increase needed housing, however, permitting college kids to infiltrate more neighborhoods in Eugene will just destroy those neighborhoods and make Eugene a less livable community. Over three-quarters of our neighborhood has owners living in the houses. However, each time a house becomes a rental, college kids move in and the large, loud parties begin. I dread warm summer nights when you have to leave your window open. I am not suggesting, I am not suggesting that we expand the urban growth boundary. On the contrary, I believe we should keep the urban growth boundary intact and build up the downtown core instead of building large projects in livable neighborhoods. Also, I have heard no one discuss the fact that in 30 or 35 years, many Eugene residents, including myself, will probably no longer be alive, which will free up a lot of housing. I think this should be factored into how much housing do we really need. The other concern that was extremely disturbing to our neighborhood was the lack of public process. We wrote a letter in mid-June to the Planning Commission. It was signed by at least 12 people. We did not receive an answer until the end of August. At that time, we received a letter also saying we had two weeks to come up with our objections to the development. Many of us were coming and going from vacations. We were told it was up to the developers to extend the public comment period. They said, "No." This is the case of the fox guarding the hen house, and not me either. We feel like this project was a done deal from the time they proposed it to the city. They asked for variances for wetland buffers and lot size so they could build more houses, and they got it, even though we protested this in letters. Also, they never hired or certified botanist to survey for rare endangered species, even though Amazon Park is next door and has Bradshaw's lamination. When I asked the developer, "Why don't you build less houses?", she said, "Oh, we wouldn't make enough money." Why should a neighborhood have to pay for speculators' bad choice in buying land at the height of the real estate bubble? I suggest that if 10 people or more in a neighborhood protest a development of more than three or four houses or units, special considerations-
No, we have to stop now.
-should be given to the neighbors.
Emily, thank you. Carol, you're next. Carol Berg Caldwell.
Can I give a trappings?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Carol Berg Caldwell, 2510 Augusta. Greetings, Mayor and Council. Sunday, October 3rd, at 2:40 a.m., I called and spoke with Lieutenant Sam Kamkar, EPD's Watch Commander, that evening. I'd seen him earlier at 14th and Hilliard. He and other EPD were responding to a fisticuffs flap between two young men. Lots of students and others converged to watch. One yelled an epithet at the police. Officers interviewed the two combatants. Perhaps police determined there was relatively little harm done, a mutual combatant case perhaps, for they were released. The crowds drifted away. I wanted to express to Lieutenant Kamkar my recommendations to his team for many things I saw that night. I walked many alley streets, saw police issuing many MIPs, open containers, other alcohol-related citations. Media had reported the previous weekend about a riot on campus streets, police used tear gas. I hoped things would go better this night, and it did. I heard no police barking orders or acting in any way aggressively or provocatively. What I did hear and see were police handling a very challenging scene, something none can fully comprehend without seeing firsthand. Virtually thousands of young people definitely hyped up in excitement over the huge football win, most in varying stages of inebriation. Due to the sheer crush of the throngs, young people often spilled off of sidewalks into the path of oncoming traffic. Frankly, the many near misses and close calls between young bodies and rushing cars really jarred me. Surely, the psychic toll of such a night can be considerable, for while I was only observing a few hours of this, I came home feeling somewhat drained. Yet, police spend the whole night in the thick of it with the responsibility largely on them to do what they can to keep young folks safe. I heard definite fatigue in some police voices. Perhaps these officers did double duty that day and evening to help meet the staffing needs of this party patrol detail. I heard something else in those police voices time and again. I heard professionalism calm, modulated tones, courtesies, and young people responded in kind. One party host even thanked the officers who visited their party. An officer told me later that often uninvited guests crash parties, and sometimes party crashes are minors, which can and does put party hosts in legal jeopardy. Like many in community, I was troubled to hear about the tear gassing in September, and I hope for no recurrence. I know many are as glad and hopeful as I am that those in university administration and at EPD with other community folks are continuing to work together, seeking solutions, studying root causes, to find ways to reduce the impact of party nights around campus. We aren't in the shoes of police teams assigned there, but we can notice and commend when things are handled effectively, professionally, and with courtesies, as was done October 3rd. Despite exacerbating circumstances, many were kept safer, and that says a lot. Thank you, Lieutenant Kamkar and EPD team. It was exceptional. Well, exceptional to me, but for police, perhaps, it was all just part of a night's work. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Daniel is next, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
Julie Daniel, 2875 Harris Street in Zelenka's Ward. I don't know the number, sorry, Alan.
(INAUDIBLE).
So I'm here to speak in favor of the west, you know, the MX system. I use the MX frequently to get to work and to meetings downtown, and it's seriously reduced the number of miles that I drive. And I know that businesses in West Eugene, many of them are frightened, and there's a lot of misunderstandings about what an MX line out in West Eugene might look like, and they're afraid that it'll affect them adversely. It has not been my experience. I operate a busy retail business selling used building materials, both large and small, bulky and small items, that's located a block from the Eugene-Springfield MX line. We consider being located near an MX line to be an advantage. We've seen our business grow since the MX was introduced, even during the economic downturn. We've steadily increased foot traffic and people who walk onto our lot rather than drive in. And if you know the Glenwood area at all, you know it's not because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic out there. It's not exactly a walkable area. It's likely that more people are using the MX and walking in from the bus stop. I think more and more customers and public in this community are looking for businesses that demonstrate sustainability, and an important criterion is location near convenient mass transit. An MX fills that requirement elegantly. Employees and customers can reach us quickly and conveniently without using a car. We brag about being located near the MX. We put the link on the schedule on our website, and we encourage people to beat the traffic and parking hassles by using it. It gives our customers an easy alternative to using the car, which they value. I think MX is an efficient way to reduce congestion, CO2 emissions, and energy consumptions, all goals that this community supports. With a projected population increase of many thousands of people over the next 20 years, we can't afford to dither about providing viable, user-friendly transportation alternatives. It's not easy to get people to ride the bus if they own a car, and that's exactly why the MX is a viable solution. Some of those that oppose to the MX, they've been comparing it to other bus services, but I think that's a real mistake. The MX has a great advantage, and believe me, I'm an MX rider, and I would never get it together to ride the bus. The frequency of the service allows people to make spontaneous travel decisions, and that's just like a car or bicycle rider does. You want to go somewhere, you just go do it. And it makes an enormous difference. You don't have to plan, you don't have to look up the schedule, you don't have to arrange it, and you don't have to run your day around when the bus runs. It removes a significant barrier that stops many people from using mass transit, and consequently, MX attracts a somewhat different demographic. People who use public transport because it's convenient or fits their values, not because they have no other choice.
Thank you.
So I strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladen, you're next, followed by Charles Hibbert.
Good evening, City Council staff. I'm Kimberly Gladen, and I live in the downtown core. I'm here tonight to talk about the downtown public safety. Granted, it's getting into rainy season. Unfortunately, the crowds downtown really haven't subsided that much, and having reduced police protection downtown really hasn't helped matters very much. Your repainted sidewalks, very nice, with the "Do Not Skateboard" on it. Unfortunately, the lack of police on Mondays and Tuesdays have made it open season on pedestrians, and the current game is to skate as close as you can, or ride your bike as close as you can to a pedestrian. And if something is said to you, like, "Hey, you mind not being so close? You shouldn't be on the sidewalk?", I hear, "Hey, no cops down here, they can't do anything about it." I've seen people deliberately skateboarding, chanting that little slogan, and jumping on things. Also, there's still a pretty bad garbage problem down on West Broadway. The crew that usually hangs out at 55 West Broadway leaves huge amounts of trash. They throw it in the street. I've talked to them about it and gently said, you know, "Hey, how about putting it in the garbage can, you know, and being a little more environmental with the earth?", only to be told, "Hey, it's all good, sister. It'll all biodegrade. Go back to the earth." Well, in the amount of years it takes for an orange peel, and cardboard, and papers, and clothing, and food debris to go back, we could be hip-deep in it like Short Mountain landfill. Also, there's the idea that eventually, like in medieval Europe, throwing your garbage and refuse and poop and stuff in the street eventually brings enough vermin and perhaps plague within the herd. There's also a lack of response with the police, too, downtown. Last Wednesday, somebody was getting a little weird on the park blocks and disturbed some of the food cart vendors, setting a fire even. And although the food cart vendors called the police, it took them 15 minutes to get there with somebody screaming and setting fires. I mean, that's not acceptable in the downtown. Those vendors lost all their customers that afternoon, and right now, some of them are considering they might have to shut down their business on the park blocks because their customers are being harassed every day. This morning, one of the vendors mentioned to me that a couple of the kids were following an older lady and spitting on her, until somebody said something. Nobody should come down and experience that. That it's not okay for three kids to be spitting on old ladies or skateboarding and scaring pedestrians. There's also blood on the sidewalk at the 10th Street entrance to the Aphter's Cabaret. It's been there for two weeks. It's been reported to the city repeatedly, and nobody has cleaned it up. That's unacceptable also. You know, I mean, if maybe you guys have to go down there yourselves with a scrub brush and a bucket of water and take care of it, please do, because you're making the big bucks, and it needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Hibbert is next, followed by, looks like Bob Machioni.
I just wanted to say congratulations for removing the parking meters downtown. I'm a person that closed my banking account-
Would you give your name first, please?
Charles Hibbert. My business is on West 11th, 5555 West 11th. I just wanted to congratulate you for getting rid of the parking meters downtown for a while. I'm a person that closed my banking account. Walked out of my bank one day, they were writing me a parking ticket, and I walked back in the bank, shut my account down, and I've never been downtown again to do business. So parking meters do chase people away. But anyway, I'm yet to oppose the MX for West 11th. I don't think that a bus service that they want to spend another $100 million or whatever the price is, is worth it for down there. We can do a bus service that's much more efficient based on the existing bus service. I've watched those buses all day, and most of them are empty. During the peak hours, we should run bigger buses, and during the slow times, they could run smaller buses and save money on fuel and that. The bus, that lady there says it saves CO2 emissions, while the buses aren't any more efficient than the ones that are running right now. So I can understand transport between two cities, like they have between Eugene and Springfield. There's a lot of people that could go between there, but I don't see anybody on West 11th that catches a bus. All those businesses aren't conducive to bus service. Repair shops, furniture stores, I've never seen anyone going to those businesses that are going to catch a bus to go and buy furniture, or get the automobile repaired, or get the RV repaired, or put signs on their vehicles. I don't see why the bus service is going to be viable. The biggest problem I have is the bus, LTD already can't pay the bills on the infrastructure they have now, and I'm concerned that down the road, who's going to pay for the extra infrastructure that they're going to want to put in down there? Is the city, is the city going to pay for that infrastructure, or we, as taxpayers, going to pay? We already pay taxes on every employee I hire. There's an LTD tax, which is devastating, too. I don't see why we have to pay for somebody else driving a bus, which none of my employees have a bus. They don't ride the bus. So I just wanted to encourage the City Council to oppose the bus down West 11th. I think there's other alternatives, and I'm pretty sure that $100 million or whatever they're spending on that, people say, "Well, it's the federal money." Well, that's our taxpayers' money. That's what's wrong with government today. That's pork barrel spending. When you're putting something in that's not necessary and that people don't want. So I just wanted to, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Bob Machioni is next, followed by Wendy Butler Boyesen.
Hi, I'm Bob Macharoni. I have a sports car shop at 288 West 6th Avenue. I live in Ferry Street Bridge, so I believe I'm in Ward 1 with my business. I actually know that all of you councilmen do not make the big bucks, and you couldn't pay me to do your job, so I appreciate you all doing it. And I'm here again to ask you to do think of small businesses while you're working here. I am opposed to EMX. One of the things that EMX seems to base their premise on is a group of faulty numbers. Traffic engineers will tell you that if you run buses every 10 minutes, people won't look at schedules, and you will double your ridership. And that sounds like a great idea, okay? The issue really is, is that EMX, Lane Transit, claims that our transit, our money, our transit, is putting out misinformation, when in actuality, they're putting out vague information and misinformation of their own. They, the University EMX, they will tell you, they started to tell me two years ago that they carried 6,000 people a day. And so I questioned that number, and I said, "It's impossible, because you don't have enough seats on the buses to carry 6,000 people." It then became 6,000 boardings a day. And the boarding number was a little hard to clarify, and what we actually finally clarified it at is, you're counted when you get on and you're counted when you get off. So that's two. Now, if you ride to work and you ride back, that's four. You're four boardings for the day. And so they have 1.8 million boardings on their numbers on that University MX. Well, if you divide that by four, because it's one person riding to work and riding back, getting on and off, and these are unaudited numbers. We did a count, and their numbers are optimistic by over 20%. But we'll use their numbers. At 1.8 million people or boardings, it actually comes down to 450,000 boardings for that line. That is their busiest line by far. If you divide that out and extrapolate that into actual passengers, you're carrying 1,000 to 1,200 passengers average. And so that's a lot of money to spend for 1,000 people a day. And so actually, when you start spending $105 million, 20 to 25 million a mile, on the rest of West 11th line, it gets even more expensive. University was $4 million. If you extrapolate out to the 61 miles they would like to build, it will become $1.5 billion to build that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Wendy Butler Boyesen, followed by Kevin Bellanger.
Wendy Butler Boyesen, 1265 City View. Not sure which ward. We've only been there about a year. We've been here for 21 years, though. Just for a little variety, after all, diversity is the key of Eugene. I support the West Eugene MX very, very strongly. I live along the Amazon, and I certainly shared my concerns about the Amazon routing. But I told LTD, and I'm actually on record in the Register-Guard, saying, "If that was the only routing that was necessary, if that was the best routing, that I would vote for it, even though it meant flattening my house, my condo, because I feel this is so important to our community. It is so important that we provide accessibility in transportation, not just for people, but for all of the businesses exist, that they need to have people who can get there." Take a look, especially at MAX in Portland where we used to live. There was nothing where that MAX line went along Gresham, and it is all business development along that MAX line, and there was nothing there before they built it. It was a golden opportunity for business. Obviously, there was congestion in West Eugene, or people wouldn't have voted for the Parkway, and the City Council would not have directed LTD to plan for an MX line along West 11th. Obviously, West 11th needs a bus service. LTD does have doorway counters, and I'll tell you, because of their budget crunch, I have been on two buses. 30 was cut, so about 30% of the ridership along West 11th and West 18th had to find another way to get downtown. West 11th, number 41, the Sunday, the service changed. We got on the bus at 10 o'clock in the morning to get to church. It was standing room only before we got to the Washington-Jefferson Streets. What's wrong with standing room? Okay? Later that same week, I was on the 36th. It was standing room only before we got to Chambers, and as we came downtown by Peace Health, all of the wheelchair spaces, all of the walker spaces were taken. There was a gentleman in a walker, and he couldn't get on the bus. There was no place for a person in a walker to sit. All the spaces were taken. We need to provide accessibility. The MX buses are wonderful. My husband is disabled. We had to sell the one car we had after he had his stroke. He can ride the MX buses much more easily than LTD. He has to take the expensive ride source unless I'm with him. He can manage the MX buses by himself. We know that there's a budget crunch. MX costs 30% less per boarding. That's money that can be used for other services compared to the regular buses. Businesses are going to be disrupted while MX is built. We know that. Any kind of street work disrupts everybody, but it doesn't necessarily kill businesses. Let's not be Luddites. Let's favor a project that'll be best for all Eugene. I'm a consumer. Since we went, Carlos, I've bought two refrigerators, a washer, a dryer, a freezer, a couch, a love seat. I don't even have a car, and I got all those things. When we did have a car, my husband went to the shops on West 11th because he could ride the bus to work.
Thank you very much. Kevin Bellanger is next, followed by Tara Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kevin Bellanger, B-E-L-A-N-G-E-R, and I live at 2990 High Street. I'm here to express my deep support for the West Eugene MX project. I'm here to give you three reasons why I think it is important for our community and why the citizens do believe in this project. First, West Eugene and primarily West 11th is an auto-dominated place. While there are bus stops and sidewalks, they are not living up to their potential since it's not a place people want to be outside of an automobile. Strategic investment in the MX would go a long way in improving connections and giving other modes a chance. Just because West 11th is predominantly focused on the automobile right now does not mean it always be that way and always should be that way. I think the MX would be a catalyst in making West Eugene a much better place. Second, I have heard opponents to this project state that it would decrease livability and housing prices along the route. That is simply not true. Studies have shown that people are willing to pay more for housing in close proximity to enhanced public transportation, since they can walk there and get places more conveniently. There's a surprising amount of hidden density along the proposed routes on West 11th with the large number of multifamily housing developments and the density that lives there. There's a captive ridership that would love to have a better option than sitting in traffic on West 11th or being forced to follow a bus schedule. Finally, MX is an eco-friendly option. Detractors might point to the low gas mileage of MX buses. However, the low mileage is choosing, the low mileage is more than offset by the quantity of people that MX can carry and does carry on a daily basis. LTD is choosing to put MX in strategic locations along its highest ridership areas and in areas with great potential for future ridership increases. Attracting new riders from an already high ridership area will not be difficult, which would take more cars off the road and make the MX even more efficient. The MX is a great community asset. We're not dense enough, nor do we have enough people to support light rail, so building an innovative bus rapid transit system is perfect for our small community, and we can look at the past successes to envision what the MX has the potential to be. So thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. Tara Smith is next, followed by Andrew Saris.
Hi, my name is Tara Smith, and I'm an environmental studies student at the University of Oregon, and I'm here representing the Climate Justice League. I live in Ward 3 currently, but last year, I had an internship as part of the Environmental Leadership Program where I was working in the West Eugene Wetlands. My partner and I had a travel to Danabo Street in the Bethel area two or three times a week, and we attempted to bike when the weather permitted, but most of the time, we had no choice but to drive, and we were teaching climate change. I often had to get there and back on my own sometimes and use the bus, which takes over twice as long. If the MX extension had been there in place, I would have been able to travel in a reasonable amount of time. It was difficult that since I wanted to use public transportation, but there wasn't an efficient transportation system for me. an efficient transportation system for me. As I mentioned, I'm also a student, and like other students, we sometimes need things from the companies out there, like Target and Walmart, Fred Meyer, down West 11th. However, without a car, this is nearly impossible. It's difficult to know how much time you'll need at each individual store and plan on making that bus back or waiting another hour. So you're, I know personally, when I go out there using the bus, I'm constantly paranoid about not getting on the bus, but with the EMX, you could, that's arriving every 10 to 20 minutes, you wouldn't have to worry. Also, the MX would promote environmental sustainability as transportation counts for 30% of all U.S. carbon emissions. The MX could help to lower our carbon emissions, and I think that it represents where the future is going. I highly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Saris is next, followed by Karen Smoot.
Hi, my name's Drew Saris and I'm a resident of Ward One. I came here tonight because I feel like Eugene is my home. I've lived here about four years now and I plan on staying for a long time. I've biked down 13th, I've taken the bus to Gateway, and I've driven down Bailey Hill Road. I know these streets now and have experienced firsthand some of the issues surrounding transportation. Biking down West 11th in Oregon's finest rain is not always the most ideal of situations in stalled traffic. We have all been in congestion on West 11th and realize how busy it can be. However, we are also lucky to have West 11th since it provides the city with some of its finest businesses. We all want to live in healthy and thriving communities, and we all work tirelessly to create that place we wish to see. With the proposal to extend the EMX line through West 11th, we have the opportunity to bring about that change. By planning ahead and constructing the EMX line now, we can avoid Seattle's past decision to not build more public transportation, which has led to huge debts in building the transportation now and its significant problems more in the future. This extension will also help boost the local economy by creating more opportunities for commerce on West 11th and creating the space for Eugene to prosper and become a national innovator and leader in public transportation and community livability. It also has the potential to unite many different visions and hopes for Eugene, both environmentally, economically, and socially. Thank you all very much for your time and listening to all the passionate voices around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Smoot is next, followed by Julia Palmer.
Hi, my name is Karen Smoot. I'm a stu-, or I live at 1897 Ferry Street, 97401, in Ward Three. I'm an environmental science student at the university, and I've had the pleasure of meeting Mayor Piercy before. She's been very gracious in responding to emails, and so thank you. And I'm originally a native of San Francisco, which is a town or city known for public transportation and alternatives to cars. But even though I come from there, when I come to Eugene, I notice how, how strong all the bike infrastructure is and public transit, and I notice it really brings the community together, community together a lot more than it does in my hometown. So that's made me really thankful for being able to live in Eugene and being able to enjoy all those wonderful features. So I'd like to say that, or I'd like to take this opportunity to say that I strongly support the West 11th MX extension, because I think that if you provide any kind of public transit for people, they'll use it. There's obviously a lot of congestion. I myself have also biked down West 11th, and it's not very pleasant. And with all the stores and parking lots, people are driving out there, there's undoubtedly going to be a number of people who would choose to ride the bus if it was available to them and it was convenient and timely. So yeah, I'd like to just say that I support that, the MX extension, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Julia Palmer is next, followed by Claire Ottwell.
Hi there, folks. I'm Julia Palmer. I live at 2740 Almeida Street, and I'm in Councilor Brown's district. I'm here to support the EMX as well. I think there are a lot of residents, low-income, high-dense housing on the south side of West 11th who are people who use bus service more than some of the rest of us might. There also, I think, tend to be folks that aren't able to participate in the political process as easily as I can come down here. So I just want to bring out the fact that there are people who aren't as able to come to a meeting like this, who really stand to benefit a lot from having rapid transit running down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Ottwell is next, followed by, it looks like Nicholas Garcia.
Hi, my name is Claire Ottwell. I live at 2245 Arthur Street, and I'm a graduate student at the University of Oregon. And I am also speaking to strongly support the West 11th MX extension. I think that it will provide a much-needed service to the community, and I don't want to be too repetitive about all of the great points that have already been brought up about bus rapid transit. But I do want to point out that if the city is serious about implementing the Eugene Climate and Energy Action Plan, which it unanimously endorsed two months ago, that big steps need to be taken to meet the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030. In the plan, there are high-priority actions outlined. One of them specifies aligning LTD's long-range transit plan to integrate bus routes into the broader transportation system. I think that this Eugene MX extension is a crucial step in implementing that plan. I think the actions will not be implemented by themselves and that the community needs to get behind them, so thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Garcia is next, followed by Angela Bayless.
Hi, my name's Nick Garcia. I live at 3725 Kincaid Street, and I'm embarrassed to say I don't know what ward that is. Does anybody? Thank you. Awesome. Anyway, so I'm here representing a student group called Live Move. We're focused on transportation and sustainability issues, and I'm also here to voice my support for the West Eugene MX extension. I think, again, I also don't want to repeat what everybody's been saying, but I do think that often the voices that are heard with issues like this and our democracy in general are the loudest people, not necessarily just the people in general. And I think many of the people who will benefit from the MX are people whose voices maybe don't get heard as much as they should. That includes people who are too young, too old, or otherwise unable to drive, people who cannot afford to drive or choose not to for environmental or other reasons. And so I think these are people who will benefit from it in the short term. But at least as importantly, I think all of Eugene residents would benefit from it in the long term, because as we move forward into a world where fuel prices are much higher, where we have to deal with climate change, having an effective transit system will be really important for Eugene's success. So I urge you as elected officials to try to take into account the public good in Eugene in general, not just those people who maybe are the best at making their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up, Angela Bayless.
Hi there, I'm Angela Bayless, 255 Baxter Street, Ward Eight. I'm not here to talk about transportation. I'm here to hold up my own example as a resident of Eugene for you to surmise and hopefully take action upon and learn from my experience. Two years and two days ago, my home burnt to the ground in a total loss house fire. It was rebuilt. My daughter and I escaped. Quite frankly, we won that day. We escaped with our lives. A year ago, all of my inspections passed, and I was getting ready for a final home inspection so that we could consider our home done and go home. In my attempts to finalize that inspection process, I have now proven in court several weeks ago and again today of different code violations, including 17 fire hazards of installed recessed lighting done by a contractor here in town named Sprinter Electric and passed with flying colors by the City of Eugene Building Department. I also found two weeks ago that the engineered trusses for my plans for my home were cut apart and scabbed back together because the wall wits were built incorrectly and not according to the plans, but yet they passed inspection. All of my inspections passed. I went to the city a year ago. I asked Seda Collier for help. She provided it in the name of Carl Richardson and Mark Whitmill. There was scheduled inspections, and then they were all canceled, and I have a voicemail from Mr. Richardson stating that the work at my home was exceptional, that the work that Woodfellas did in the wall wits incorrectly, sheathing methods that were incorrect, all of it, it was exceptional, and they were standing behind their inspections. It has been proven in court now, in small claims court, in cases that I have lost, that my home is an engineering nightmare. It is unsafe. I invite you to drive by. There's a six-foot level that is taped to the front bearing post that is bearing more than 20,000 pounds of weight that is bowing as the gable falls through the trusses. I have a home, or I have a framing inspection scheduled for tomorrow. It seems there were no inspectors available last week when I called it in. At this point in time, we're moving. We're packing and we're leaving. I was sat down last month by Chuck Wall of KIA Engineering and told that some things can't be fixed, and the only way to fix my home would be to raise it and begin again. After two years of trying to go home, it's not worth it anymore. I'd like to give you these things. From my understanding, these statements, the people say, "There's a letter there from the contractor who built my home dated in April after the police served me with a stalking order that states I will be seriously injured if killed. This is your system. We're moving out of Eugene. My daughter and I have nothing left but each other, exactly what we had the day of the fire. And ladies and gentlemen, don't feel sorry for me because for us, that's enough. The next victim of a total loss needs your help. The building department is encouraging unsafe homes."
All right. With that, we'll close the forum and ask if there are comments from council. I see none. Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming down, and I appreciate the people coming down on both sides who have differing opinions on the EMX. Kimberly, I hear you. Are you still here? You know, I'll, city manager's heard you. I'm sure the police department will hear you, and I'm, I don't know what else to say. You know, I guess I could start a bucket brigade, but I don't know that I can get any of my partners to join me or not, but we'll see about that. I would like to respond to Ms. Bayless, but the last emails that we got from, regarding her thing, I think, wasn't there some litigation? City manager, do you know anything about that?
Not, not that I'm aware of, filed against the City of Eugene.
Okay. I'm, I'm reticent to say, because I, I know that this email came to me, and I don't know if it came to anybody else, and I sent it forward, and I was, if I had my laptop, I could look it up, and I was pretty sure that I was, that I had not gotten a response or I was advised to make no comment.
Let me say, I appreciate your caution. It's very possible that I wouldn't know about that.
Okay, okay, because I, you know, you have entered the civil court, and I'm always cautious about looking at. Not that I didn't hear, not that I don't hear your frustration and your concerns, Angela, and I'm really sorry that this has happened to you, but I, I'm really not, I really don't know what to say about it, but I do appreciate you bringing it forward and enlighteningness to your process that you've had with our planning department.
What did you say?
I mean, the permit department, excuse me. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Solomon.
Thank you. I just wanted to add two comments. I wanted to follow up on Kimberly's remarks about downtown. I've sort of come to view Kimberly as kind of a gauge of, she's really at the pulse on what's going on downtown, and so I was kind of amazed to hear what sounds to me like a complete reversal of what she's been here talking about. She's been here complimenting us on the improvements downtown and over the summer and how safe and nice and clean it had become, and I'm, so I guess I would like an explanation about what's happened, why all of a sudden it's going the other way. And then, secondly, to this issue around Ms. Bayless, if I'm not allowed to comment, then could I ask the city manager to comment on this or send a memo as to what the situation is?
We can follow up with you, and we will do that. I'm not prepared to comment on any of the particular situation, primarily because I'm not familiar enough with the situation to be able to comment on that, but we can get back to you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody coming to speak today, and Kimberly, I said this a few thousand times, I'm down there every day, too, and everything that she said, I promise you, I've seen and then some on a regular basis. The change that I've seen is when the officers had to go, we had a dedicated group of six officers that now are back as school resource officers, so the staffing level changed around downtown. And when we have adequate officers in the downtown corps to be able to do the job, it stays at least manageable. I don't personally believe it's quite enough to the place where I'd like to see police presence in downtown Eugene, but it's at least manageable. When the officers aren't there and we don't have the staffing and we can't afford to do that job right, the problem comes back very quickly. So I, we've had emails talking about that in the midtown area as well, and I'd like to see us find a permanent way to affect that level of staffing downtown. I know we are planning to with the new officers coming on. But I, it occurs to me that I've put forward at least three or four motions on dedicated staffing, police staffing for downtown over the last four years, whether they've been officers to fill in back time, whether they've been new officers to match the number of bike patrols that were in the park area, this particular group of officers that deal with the specific thing downtown. We've done it multiple times, but we tend to move the staffing then when the rainy season starts. I'd really like to see us finding a way to change that and have a different sort of downtown's permanent ongoing staffing level with police officers. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can respond to that, because the issue isn't the resources. The resources have been already appropriated by the council as part of the downtown public safety issue. The issue is bringing officers on board, on staff, training them, having them go through their training program, and then putting them onto staff in downtown. So it's, that's the piece we're in right now. It's not a, a resource issue. You've approved the resources. It's getting them hired, trained, and on the street.
If I can finish this a little bit here. One of the things that I find interesting about that, I appreciate, John, very much what you're saying. We've had multiple motions over the last four years to do that, and that has been a reoccurring sort of thing that we've talked about, and I understand the issue pretty well. But the last police commission meeting, the chief mentioned that they're at full staffing and that there's no gaps as we have had in previous years where we've allocated the funds but don't have the members on staff. Now, I know there's a training issue to bring them up to speed, but we're having the same kind of conversation year after year, and I'm hopeful that we can get to a place soon where we're not having this conversation this way anymore, and we have ongoing permanent folks downtown adequate to the job, so thank you.
Counselors Alenka.
Well, just to follow up on that, I had lunch with Chief Kearns today, who reiterated exactly what the city manager said, which is, "It's not a matter of resources. We have the tools and the resources to deal with downtown adequately at this point. It's a matter of getting them in place." We just approved in June the motion to add seven, eight new officers downtown. It's, it doesn't happen when the city council snaps our fingers how much we'd like it to occur, but they're in the process of getting those folks in the downtown corps and up to the full complement that the city council voted to, to do. And also complimented the chief, while I'm at it, on him having a full complement of police officers. We only have about one to two vacancies right now. We used to run about 10 to 15. Now we're up to a full complement of folks, so we are pretty close to full staffing, and we will be at the So we are at, pretty close to full staffing and we will be at the additional staffing as soon as we can get them onboard and trained and in place. So I think we do have the adequate tools to deal with downtown. For all the folks that came and talked about EMX, thank you for coming. Tell your friends, come and say the same thing.
So I too want to thank everybody who took the time to come to a council meeting and come up and speak. Thank you very much for being here. Kimberly, to deal with the issues that she brought up, I think these are, I mentioned it a little bit in our work session tonight, I think these are, public safety solutions are only part of the solutions. We have other issues that she pointed to about how we respond to, in, in other ways to some of the situations downtown, whether that's a cleanup or, or whether that's a, another kind of, I asked the manager earlier about one of our goals in dealing with this were outreach strategies of people coming in and dealing with some of the folks in need in our, in our downtowns. I just really want to know how that's going. I think there, we identified a multi-pronged strategy and while the police are an important part of it, they're only one part of it and really like to know how we're doing with all of those because we, we do have reoccurring issues. And then in terms of the, Ms. Bayless's issues, there have been, she's spent a lot of time trying to make people aware of this, a lot of time trying to make people aware of this issue. There have been many, many emails that have gone back and forth and I, I actually have no clue as to what the right, I mean, I've heard, I've heard different versions, so I don't really know what the real, the real skinny is on it and I hope that she will make us aware of that. But, but it isn't without her having put forward a tremendous amount of effort to try to get our attention on this and I want to be fair about, I want to be fair about saying that, so. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you all very much. Yes, you, yes, Counsel Ortiz.
Thank you. I just want to say two more things before we leave public comments. City manager, could you somehow share with us, not today, but two things about how the lack of the parking meter money is going to affect the plan with the police? Because I, from my understanding, that was all kind of joint, the parking fund was going to be paying off something that that money wasn't going to be used to pay for the police. And then the other strategy that we talked about at the budget committee was cahoots, getting, you know, getting a new bus going. And I know that's not going to happen overnight, but then the budget committee decided to, to donate or to approve funds for El Cara as opposed to funding cahoots for a half a year. And so is cahoots going to be, are they preparing? Are we having those conversations? Because I think that a lot of these, I don't think a lot of it, I, you know, I think cahoots is a very valuable service and I think they could, they, they really have a lot of the tools and they're not police officers, so they can't do enforcement, but they can definitely de-escalate some of these situations and have conversations with people. So can we hear when that's going to be happening?
I can, we'll follow up on the second one because I don't know the specifics, current status, so we'll do that in the cahoot. On the first issue, the way that worked was that the downtown urban renewal district, what was approved by the council earlier this year, there was dollars, approximately $4.8 million of that, which would then pay off a garage, a parking garage, which would then free up what was the debt service for that garage to pay for police officers. So the parking meters actually doesn't impact that transaction at all.
Counselor Zelenka.
Just to answer your question on cahoots, I asked that specific question to the chief at lunch and he said the new cahoots are going to be ready and in use by January.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you all. Next is the consent calendar. Council president.
Move to approve items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Brown.
I'd like to pull item C.
Item C is pulled. Counselor Ortiz.
I'd like to pull item D.
C and D are pulled and that leaves A and B. Without any further comment on that, would you vote on that? Okay, eight in favor and none in opposition, that passes. And now we're back to items, item C, which is Counselor Brown, right?
Yes. I've, I've got a couple of questions. For the people watching on TV, this, this is about the annexation of some properties just off of Highway 99 and Airport Way on the way to the airport. And the owner of the properties wants to annex into the City of Eugene in its five parcels and it's about 19 acres. My questions kind of center around the stormwater issue. It's the, the property now is in the county and the stormwater is being handled by Junction City, the Junction City District. And they said that they, I mean, correct me when I go wrong here, if I go wrong, but my understanding is that the Junction City said we'll, we'll continue to handle the stormwater unless the post-development flow is greater than the pre-development flow, which is right now. So apparently the owners, the owner of the properties wants to do some development there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then that goes on to say if the flow is greater than it is now, I'm not sure who's going to measure that and how they're going to measure it, but how would, how would that be done?
Yes, there are several options. So the, the flow would be looked at at the time of building permit and at that time they would determine if it was going to meet or exceed a pre-development flow.
I see.
There's an option to, to meet pre-development flow, is to do onsite infiltration. There's, there's a couple of ways you can.
Well, that was my next question is, is apparently one of the mitigations would, if the flow does turn out to be greater than it is right now, is onsite detention. What, what exactly does that mean?
That's when the stormwater is actually held onsite and not discharged necessarily to a ditch or a, some other storm mechanism. And they need an engineered size area for whatever the stormwater they see coming.
Is that kind of like a French drain idea where you dig a big hole and fill it with gravel and let all the water flow in there and hope that it doesn't go anywhere else?
It can be similar to that.
Something kind of like that, okay. All right. Well, I, and then I also noted the, I think the only entity that objected to this idea was Lane Rural Fire and Rescue because they're going to be losing one of their customers that pays them money for, for that area. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and then the county, of course, is going to be losing some taxes and the city will be gaining taxes because they'll be in the city and will gain some responsibilities for the properties too. What does the, I've always meant to ask this, what does the property owner get out of all this by coming, by being a part of the City of Eugene rather than out in the county? There's got to be some advantage for them. I'm just, I've never asked this question. I'm just curious what it is.
There is, in most situations, it's a development trigger. So in some cases, it could be if somebody wants to subdivide land, in this case, there would, there's a building addition that's proposed.
Is it easier to get a building permit from the city than it is from the county?
It's actually a, a trigger to where you would be required to annex in order to, to be able to do the development.
I see. Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you. Does this annexation request contain any unimproved roads?
No, it does not. It includes no right of way.
Okay, thank you.
You going to put a motion on the table?
It's already on the table.
That's what I thought he was.
Actually, I, city manager, I'm, I'm not sure that it, that it is, is it?
Because it was pulled.
Because it was pulled, don't I have to read the motion?
No.
Is it?
So this one, if you feel more comfortable, you can make it again, but technically it's on the table and I.
Good enough for me.
We usually do.
Good enough for me.
Okay. So, I think we're ready to vote on that. Would you vote on that one, please? It's confusing to me. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Item D, is that Counsel Ortiz?
Yes, thank you. I just was hoping to highlight a good thing. If you, if I could have staff just give us a over, just a quick overview of what we're doing.
Sure. What we're doing is approving a 20-year property tax exemption for the brand-new Lamb Building that's being developed by St. Benet. It's 35 new units of affordable housing for very low-income Eugene residents. So those are residents at 50% or less of area median income. And the Lamb Building will also create St. Benet's 1,000th unit of affordable housing in Oregon. Most of those are in Lane County. And I just want to put it out here that the grand opening for the Lamb Building will be November 8th at 11:00 a.m. and everyone is invited.
So I guess this means you get our 1,000 stacks.
I'll pass them along.
All right. Would you please put it on? Oh, it's on. All the, yes, okay.
I don't.
I'm going to repeat that behavior.
I don't typically vote in favor of property tax exemptions, especially when it revolves around the MUPD program because I think they're unnecessary, especially in the West University Neighborhood where we're having an abundance of, of building going on in and around, especially outside the MUPD area, which is really interesting, even more so than the other parts. But this is the type of program that I think would not occur unless we gave it some help, unlike a lot of the MUPD programs that we have. And this type of low-income rental housing, exactly the type of things we need to encourage and over, to overcome some of the constraints we have with regard to land use and the amount of land and low-income housing is one of the ways to deal with that issue. And I applaud St. Vincent de Paul and Terry McDonald for 1,000 housing units. It's really spectacular. So I applaud them.
And also, just for those who are listening, that this is one of the things we try to do to keep people from being homeless. And so this is one of the efforts in, in many of these units throughout our community and neighboring communities where we're trying to create housing opportunities for people who struggle to be housed. So I think we're ready to vote on that. Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you very much. The next and final item for the day on our green sheet is, deals with forming an act, something we've been working on for quite a while. And I'm going to ask Brenda Wilson to please explain the latest proposal to us.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Brenda Wilson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager. Just as a really quick refresher, as you know, Senate Bill 944 was passed by the Oregon State Legislature in 2009. It mandated that Lane County develop and create a area commission on transportation. We are only one of two areas in the state, including Metro, that did not have an, an act, referred to it as an act. So we've been working on this for about 18 months now. Lane County put together a group of stakeholders known as the Forum for the Creation of an Area Commission on Transportation for Lane County. I'll refer to them as the FACT LC. Those stakeholders would consist of the majority of members of the eventual act that would be put together for Lane County. Mayor Piercy was the representative to the FACT LC from the City of Eugene. They met over several months, many hours, and hammered out with the rest of the stakeholders proposed bylaws. Senate Bill 944 required that Lane County develop bylaws that had broad support from stakeholders within the county and bring those back to the Oregon Transportation Commission for adoption, for the formation of a Lane County Act. We brought this to you twice for a pretty good discussion and in April, you voted unanimously to support the FACT LC's proposed bylaws. Those bylaws then went to the Board of Commissioners in June. They heard testimony from the various stakeholders and actually had two OTC commissioners. No decision was made in June and they voted to postpone the discussion of the act indefinitely. July went by, most of August went by. In late August, the Board of Commissioners picked up the discussion of the act again and they voted four to one not to accept the FACT LC's version for the proposed bylaws. They changed the May 18th, 2010 version of the FACT bylaws in two ways. First, they changed the number of citizen stakeholder members from six, which is set out in the FACT LC bylaws, to a maximum of 10. The second change they made more significantly was that the Board of Commissioners would be provided the ability to appoint all 10 citizen stakeholder members, unlike the FACT LC bylaws, which provided that the act, the actual act, would adopt those, appoint those, excuse me. That would set up a situation where the Board of Commissioners would have 13 appointments to the act. They would have the 10 citizen stakeholder members, the Highway 126 member, the Lane Roads Advisory Committee member and their own member. 13 just happens to be one more than the number of mayors that would sit on the act. Most disconcerting, I think, to some of the FACT LC members were the comments that were made during the adoption of those bylaws of how those members would be chosen. One suggestion was that each board of, each commissioner would appoint two of the citizen stakeholders to represent their district. Because I had clear direction from you that you supported unanimously the FACT LC bylaws as written, once we had that decision from the Board of Commissioners, I set out to make sure that the Oregon Transportation Commission did not adopt the Board of Commissioners version of those bylaws. Set up a coalition and once that was scheduled for the joint meeting on September 26th, before the OTC, was confident that the OTC would not adopt the county's version of those bylaws. Senate Bill 944 did not permit the OTC to consider the FACT LC's version of those bylaws. So our only choice was to prevent them from adopting the Board of Commissioners version. And on September 22nd, they refused to adopt the Board of Commissioners version of the proposed bylaws because there was not broad stakeholder support. Instead, they sent it back to the county to work out bylaws that did have broad support. Between September 22nd and October 6th, things moved fairly quickly. We heard that the Board of Commissioners was going to set up either a public hearing or a work session. A meeting was set up with Senator Przyansky, Representative Holvey and some of the FACT LC representatives to determine what options we had available to us. The deadline for submitting a legislative concept was that Friday. Both Representative Holvey and Senator Przyansky indicated that they had a placeholder bill in place should the bylaws not reflect what their expectations were. And they had a list of what their expectations would be. That list included a larger number of set stakeholders, anywhere from six to 10, and that four of those stakeholder member positions would be set. And they would be set aside for stakeholders in particular interest groups, including rail, environmental land use, bike and ped and trucking. That, and that they would, each one of those stakeholder members would have a staggered term so that not all of the stakeholder members would come up for appointment at the same time. That information was then given to the county the evening before the October 6th meeting, which was last Wednesday. And at that meeting, stakeholders from the FACT LC showed up to discuss this with the Board of Commissioners and a deal was reached. The deal that was reached starts with the May 18th, 2010 FACT LC proposed bylaws. And I apologize, you do not have the most current version of the proposed bylaws. I expected to receive those by 5:30 today and did not. So you have last Friday's version. And it doesn't make me nervous because we, we've already agreed to these provisions. These are policy choices. So first, you start with the May 18th, 2010 FACT LC bylaws. You change the minimum, the maximum number of citizen stakeholders from six to 10. As I stated before, four of those seats would be set aside for rail, trucking, bike ped and environmental land use. They would be in staggered four-year terms. And the act would initially come together, the Board of Commissioners would appoint the highway. The Board of Commissioners would appoint the Highway 126 member, and those members would then appoint the four set stakeholder members, and that entire group then would appoint the remaining citizen stakeholder members. The reason that it's set up that way is because there is funding available for the actual act, but the FACT LC has been disbanded and there is no longer any funding for that. So there will be an initial bootstrapping to set up the initial members, and then from then on, the proposed bylaws require that the actual act appoint all citizen stakeholder members whenever there is a vacancy. And that was the agreed-upon proposed bylaw changes, and so I do have a change to the suggested motion, because you do not have the most current version of the proposed bylaws. And that's it. My suggested motion would be move to support the proposed changes to the May 18th, 2010 FACT LC bylaws for the Lane Area Commission on Transportation.
It's different language than you've got on this sheet?
Yes.
You need that language, Mike?
May 18th what?
The May 18th, 2010 FACT LC bylaws for the Lane Area Commission on Transportation. They appear to be wordsmithing the document, but it is my understanding from working on these all Thursday and Friday of last week, that the wordsmithing is just the fixing of grammatical and typographical errors, but the actual policy that is set forth in the AIS was the agreement that was made, and the bylaws will reflect that agreement.
I just want to confirm, having been there, that the Board of Commissioners agreed to this, the members of the FACT that were there agreed to it, and so no one was in disagreement. We thought this was all something that everybody was perfectly happy to have moved forward. So, with that, we hope to have your support too. Want to put that on the?
Yeah, okay. I move to support the May 18th, 2010 FACT LC bylaws for the Lane Area Commission on Transportation with the most current to today's updates and amendments.
Moved and seconded. Any other, okay, I think, yes?
And then I was going to say, Brenda, good job, well done, and I was going to say that I had a number of inputs from people who served on the FACT LC and from other people involved in this process, and I want to commend the mayor for doing such a great job of, of sticking with the council's unanimous recommendation and, and trying to put an agreement together that served both our unanimous recommendation and trying to come to a consensus on this, and I found it ironic that the legislature intended this body to come to consensus as a way to do business, and I found it interesting how the commissioners chose to handle that.
We got to consensus, so with that, would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition, and we hope now we will have gotten our act together. All right. Thank you.